Okay, as it is seven o'clock, I am going to call this meeting to order. If all the board members would please unmute yourselves, that would be really helpful. If you're able to. Are you guys able to unmute? No. I think I changed the setting, see if I can. There we go, now you can. Yep, you're, can hear you. I know that Sandy texted and said she was going to be a little late, so that may also include Jeff. Not, I haven't heard from him, so we will go ahead though, as it is seven o'clock, I've started the recording and we will begin with the approval of our agenda and just a couple of things, obviously, we are, I'm going to remember this time that everything is a roll call vote. So that's going to help us out immensely if I can remember that. And so just one thing about the approval of the agenda, one thing that needs to be changed is number two under new business. It's just our bread contract is for two years, so we'd be going in the second year of that. So we don't have to go out for a bit for the bread contract, just the dairy. So just take out the bread and we'll go for our just a dairy bid, so just that small change. So with that, could I get a motion to approve the agenda? Melissa?
I'll second.
Motion is made by Sagatol, seconded by Bookto. Any questions about anything else or on the agenda? Alright, hearing nothing else, we will vote and we will do that by roll. And Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I, so the motion carries. Recognition of visitors to the board meeting, thank you all for coming out and joining us this evening. I'm really hopeful that we're going to have a lot shorter meeting than last month. I'm going to keep it moving along so we can all get out and enjoy the beautiful weather. So alright, this is the time for our public forum and the way we've been doing it the past couple of months is that I'm going to unmute everyone in the field. And if you would like to speak, you need to state your name and then I will say that I have you in the list and then the next person will say their name, I will acknowledge you. And we will have up to five speakers because this is a 10-minute part of our meeting and each person gets up to two minutes of time. Please don't yield time to someone else because it's kind of up to me here to be the timekeeper and I just want to make sure that it stays fair, so. So it'll be the first five people. And let me just get my timer ready here. So with that, I am going to unmute the field here.
Julie Reimer.
Kurt Weis.
Wait, hold on. I have Julie Reimer, I have Kurt Weis. Alright, I have Julie and Kurt, so I have two.
Olivia Hansen.
Olivia Hansen. Anyone else? Anyone else wanting to speak? Alright, going once, going twice. We'll move on and we'll see.
You got it.
Now we're cooking, oh, maybe not.
Alright, so I am going to mute the field again and then we will we will start out with Julie Reimer.
Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me now?
No, you can.
Okay, I just want to say thank you to the board and I just have to say this COVID stuff hasn't been like the most fun for anybody. But I have to just say a big exemplary, I am so proud of our teachers and I am so proud to be a bold parent. We have two kids at Bold, a junior and a seventh grader. And all the dedication, the passion, how our teachers continue to keep our kids motivated and engaged, I am just so happy about and I just feel so proud to be a part of this community. I know they put in a lot of time, a lot of effort. And I just want to say a big thank you because they just kept the kids engaged. And I feel like truthfully, some good things is definitely going to come from this. When I look at the confidence that my seventh grader has, you know, kind of really new coming in, right, as a seventh grader and then now leaving this with this ability that he can communicate with platforms that he had to teach me how to do, which is what they taught me how to do for Zoom today, so. So just a big thank you to Bold. Mr. Menton, I want to thank you for all the communication that you did to keep us all up to date as parents, you responded to our emails so quickly, so thank you for that. So I just wanted to say a big thank you, I'm too lazy to write a letter, so that's why I'm doing it this way.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Weiss.
Alright, I'm on, I'm here for, on behalf of the Bold Basketball Boosters and I'm understanding that there is a possibility that they can salvage the schools in Bird Island. Our youth program needs those schools very much for practices and tournaments. That is if it, it's healthy enough to be in there. It's really tough for us to have these practices for four through eight along with the varsity junior high JV. It's going to be very interesting if we don't, we're not able to use the gyms in Bird Island. The Boosters is a nonprofit organization and then we give everything back to the kids by get, making it free. It hasn't cost anybody anything to play. A lot of schools, you know, you might have to pay $200 or $100 per kid to play, but it's free. And because, and it's free because we can have tournaments and we can do those fundraisers and without the use of the gyms in Bird Island, that wouldn't be able to be done. Also, we give many scholarships out to the kids with our Shoot-a-thon and also our senior scholarships. So we're hoping that we can use those gyms in Bird Island. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, moving on to Olivia.
Hi, okay, so I'm Olivia Hansen and I am the senior class president. And on behalf of the senior class, I just wanted to say thank you to the Bold teachers, staff, coaches and leaders who have helped us become who we are today. I'd like to thank you to the teachers, you taught us more than just the curriculum, you taught us life lessons and skills that we'll take with us for the rest of our lives. Thank you to the staff such as the custodians, cooks, paraprofessionals, library and IT staff and office members. Through your work, you provided us with nourishing meals, a clean place to work because learning is a full-time job. Answers to our many questions and many other tools that we could need to succeed. Thank you to our coaches, activity leaders and administration who helped to succeed outside of the classroom and taught us lessons about leadership, teamwork, determination and respect. Thank you to Mrs. Stein who was always there to help no matter what. She helped us with classes and figure out our schedule. She helped us apply and look for scholarships and informed us about college visits. And she was always available whenever we had questions or concerns that we needed to address. Thank you to Mr. Menton and Mr. Bransoy who kept our school running and always made an effort to connect with us, whether it was saying hello in the hallways or having conversations during lunch. Thank you for your dedication, hard work and warrior pride. While our school year might not have ended the way we wanted it to, we are so thankful for Mr. Menton, Mrs. Gross, Ms. Stein, Nancy and whoever else helped put together our graduation parade and much other things such as programs, yard signs and our senior picture. These gestures mean a lot to us and we didn't get to have the traditional senior year. Thank you for making our year special in a very unique and creative way. And last but not least, thank you to the Bold School Board members. Your work does not go unnoticed and we truly appreciate everything you've done for us, so thank you.
Thank you. Alright, and I'm not trying not to cry now, but we're good. If anyone, we have to, I'm going to unmute again because we do, there were some people that joined after. We do have two spots left, if you would like to speak, please state your name right now.
Says you're connecting.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak for public forum? Going once, going twice, I just want to make sure everybody gets the opportunity. So. Alright, we will move on. Okay, board members, you'll have to unmute yourself again. And Ms. Bransoy. Alright, so moving on, we are going to be looking at our consent items. Are, we're going to do one motion for our consent items. We're going to approve the bills for payment. Approving the minutes from the April 27th, 2020 regular meeting.
So move, Boleen.
Motion is made by Boleen.
I can't say it all.
Seconded by Sagatol, thank you. Are there any questions, discussion? Also, do we have Ja, or Jeff? I think Jeff joined, I don't know if he's unmuted, so I will unmute him here. Maybe. Jeff, you're, Jeff, you're part of the meeting now.
Oh, good.
Alright, good deal. Now we got, Sandy's not here yet, but we, we still have, we have you, so that's good. Okay, so with that, we will vote and we will be doing roll call as per usual, so we will start with Jamie.
Hi.
Jeff?
Alright.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. So motion carries. Moving on to personnel. Approve hiring, number one, approve hiring Derek Loether as a summer custodian for $10 an hour for 320 hours during the 2020 summer.
So move, Destel.
Motion is made by Destel.
Second, Bookto.
Seconded by Bookto, any questions or discussion on that? Hearing nothing, we will vote, we will start with Jeff.
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I, motion carries. Number two, approve hiring Melissa Schwarzrock as the summer custodian for the, for $10 an hour for 320 hours during the 2020 summer.
So move, Sagatol.
Okay, motion is made by Sagatol.
Second, Boleen.
Seconded by Boleen. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote. We will start with Tracy.
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. And the motion carries. Number three, approve hiring Garrett Farr as the summer custodian for $8.15 an hour for 320 hours during the 2019 summer. Actually, that'd be 2020 summer. So we're going to change that. Alright. I will make that motion.
Second, Sagatol.
Motion is seconded by Sagatol. And we will start with John.
Hi.
Oh, sorry, is there any discussion or questions?
Yeah, since you asked that, I see one's at, at $8 an hour and another one's at 10. Are there, is there a seniority scheduler?
Well, the two over at 10 are over 18.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep. Alright, anything else? Sorry about that, I kind of. We are going to start with John though.
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I, motion carries. Number four, approve hiring Kaia Young as the summer, as a summer custodian for $8.15 an hour for 320 hours during the 2020 summer.
So moved, Bookto.
Motion is made by Bookto. I will second that. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we will start with Melissa.
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And myself, I am an I. The motion carries. Number five, accept the resignation of the student council advisor Theodore Glegge effective May 11th of 2020.
So moved, Sagatol.
Made by Sagatol, seconded by Bookto, any questions or discussion?
Yeah, do we have somebody to replace that person or not?
I'm muted here, sorry, you were not unmuted. Go ahead, Mr. Bransoy.
Not at this time.
Jill, Jim is raising his hand to talk.
Yeah, where is, why?
Maybe Jim wants to respond to that.
He doesn't look like him, there was stuff, he's got some facial stuff on him.
Okay, you can unmute yourself now, Mr. Menton. And he unmuted himself?
He doesn't want to speak.
Oh, I thought he wanted to speak, okay, sorry.
There it is.
Okay. Alright, with that, I've lost, I've lost my train of thought, so with that, we will vote unless there's any other discussion on this. Alright, hearing nothing else, Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
And myself, I am an I. Mr. Menton did want to speak, that's, I just gotta, you can unmute yourself, Mr. Menton.
He said he can't.
He should be able to.
He's got lots of sign.
Not.
Oh, yay, there you are.
There we go.
I totally, I had it so you could unmute yourself, but.
Yep, well, it wasn't letting me. No, all I was going to respond to Jeff is we have, we have talked to someone who gave the person a week to think about it, so hopefully at the end of the week, we, we do have somebody ready to go.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
And thank you to Olivia for texting me that you wanted to, sorry about that.
Thanks, Olivia.
Alright, moving on, we are going to look at number six here, approve Patricia Wobleski as the food service staff for the summer food program at the Olivia campus. The hours and length of the program are dependent on COVID-19.
Do we do all these at once Jill, or do we do them separately?
Um. Yeah, we could do them all together. Because they're all the same food service staff, nothing, nothing's different.
If you would just name each one of them individually and then they could take it all as one motion because they're on the same term.
Alright, so let me.
Dependent on COVID-19, so I think that would be okay.
Okay, let me read, read it again and I'll, I'll insert all of the names. Yeah, there, nothing is different with any of them, so. Alright, number six will now be approve Patricia Wobleski, Christian Schroeder, Brenda Mensch, Brooke Trager as food service staff for the summer food program and at the Olivia campus. The hours and length of the program are dependent on COVID-19.
So move, Destel.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion is made by Destel, seconded by Benson, is there any discussion? Alright, hearing nothing, we will vote, we'll start with Tracy.
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I, motion carries, thank you for the time saver, Jeff.
Yeah.
Moving on to superintendent's report, Mr. Bransoy.
Just before I get started, I want to mention that our food service, again, Margaret and her staff are just doing an outstanding job. And since March 18th, they've served over, over 37,000 bag lunches that they've given out, so what a outstanding performance there, they've been doing it just. And I wanted to mention that Tracy and her crew at Max's honored them during Food Director Week, Food Service Week and with a lunch, and so that was really nice and they really appreciated it. We've been trying to figure out what we can do to help them and or support them and show our satisfaction, that's pretty nice. And now Eric Shea is from State Farm is going to honor them again at the end of the month, providing a luncheon for them. So I thank these people for recognizing what their, their contribution to the communities at this time that we're in. Our childcare continues with 25 to 30 daily children. And they're doing some exciting activities and the board members, you had a email from Derek Flann who oversees that program and really listing some very neat activities that they've put that extra effort in, so we thank them for that too, so. With that, I'll go on to our legislative report and as most know that the legislative states completed their work, well, they didn't get it all done, but they ended their session on last night, Sunday night, midnight, and so they worked on several numerous ominous bills that were passed over the last weekend on topics such as higher ed, agriculture, transportation, health and human services. But the bigger bills have not finished yet and that had to do with the primary, primarily taxes and bonding. So another session is, is scheduled to take, take over these bills. And so the education finance bill did pass the House and the Senate late last night and is headed to the governor for his signature. The legislation includes provisions to address issues related to the transition to distance learning. It allows the State Department to waive any requirements related earning credits, credits for advancement in grade and graduation or testing during this period of time. And it also adjusts the school aid form so that revenue is not lost to schools due to COVID-19. It allows the district to transfer funds that are not already assigned. Then Governor Walz on Thursday announced that the, that was a $91 million federal funds through the Federal Cares Act that he has applied for and we're hoping he will get this to help with access to technology and summer school programs. And the Congress states that all roads back to work and back to school go through testing. And they state that we don't know everything about this virus and we really better be pretty careful, particularly when it comes to our children. The unknown is at its highest level right now, so predicting the future related to the school is very difficult. With that then, B, I talked to, I have listed the commissioner's reports and the commissioner has really been active, involved with our schools during all his time and, and we, we meet with her telephone conference once a week now. And so this last Thursday when we visited, she released the summer school guidelines. And that's something we've been waiting for, for some time and because not knowing what with with COVID-19, what type of gatherings can we have? And so they set out the guidelines for summer school and we are going to be able to offer some learning services and she gave an overview of that. Nutrition program, childcare, recreational programs, they all had guidelines for those, so now we can move forward with the planning. Social distancing is a concern of all the types of the summer programs discussed in the youth service program, which is a big summer program at Bold. And, and Mr. Flann is working on a program that he can take small groups daily and work with them and different types of activities and focus on health and wellbeing of the athletes and the students, so. He's been working with that and he'll be putting a plan out. Just this past week, he kind of, he put a note out that there probably wouldn't be a summer program, but now with the commissioner's report, I think the plan he has will work and we'll continue with that and so. And then the, there's representatives of State Department, the High School League and the Superintendent's Association are meeting with governor and his staff to work out collectively design for rec programs to move the dials that the governor has established. And so, so that's, the commission has been very active in the government also with education, so that's, that's a real positive for us. So the update?
Dale.
Word. Approval of moving K through four students from the Bird Island site to Olivia's site, the custodian staff have been busy cleaning and preparing classrooms for the next school year. All classrooms have been signed and are ready, the actual moving, for the actual moving to take place. One item that was brought up at our last question that was brought up at our last board meeting and so I wanted to address it is that was a community survey and there were some good questions wondering where is that at? Back in February, the school board approved hiring a firm to put together a community survey and to get it out towards the end of March. And the question is, why didn't the community survey go out the end of March as planned? And we decided to postpone the community survey during this challenging time. We recognize that our focus need to be on the transition to distance learning during the COVID crisis. For now, we believe our top priority should be the immediate needs of our students and their families. Will the survey go out soon was another question, what is the plan? And at this time, we don't, we don't have a release date. Right now, we're working hard to ensure our students complete the school year successfully as we continue to wrestle with the ongoing challenges related to COVID-19. We know our community members and families are facing difficult challenges during this pandemic. And we feel that it's not the right time to distribute a survey. We are monitoring the situation closely and will keep the community informed about the timing of the survey and other school-related issues. Can I see the survey was a question. And I said, sure, you may schedule a time to stop by the office and I'll be glad to show you a copy of the survey and answer your questions. Just remember that that survey will likely change as we learn more about the impact of the pandemic and get additional advisories from the governor, education experts and public health officials. The next question was, so, all other planning is basically on hold? And that's not true at all. We continue to have discussions about the path ahead. We simply recognize that our residents have a lot to deal with right now. The time will come soon enough when the community can work with us on long-term goals for our schools. We will be ready when that happens. And so I just wanted to share that because I think people were looking forward to that survey and we were looking for, looking forward to getting the results, but with the crisis that came, we did not feel that they would be valid. So that's something that we, we don't have control over that and that's something that the unknown is very difficult to deal with right now, so. So last week, I met with Margaret and we were discussing the food service program, the food director's position and what this was all going to involve and my concern was right now we're serving 650 students at the Olivia's site. And if we shared or not at the 450 from the Olivia's site. And she shared that when she started Bold, they had over 800 students and served in the same present cafeteria we are, are in right now. So she's anxious to get a lunch schedule set for next year as she can complete her plans and that's, the principals are working on that right now. I'd planned to have a facility committee meeting last Wednesday with Ryan and the principals and the three board members to have a tour of the building and to continue discussing future facility needs. I only had one board member that could make a commitment to meet, so I canceled the meeting. I will be rescheduling that and trying to move forward as quick as we can, but it takes time to go through and get make the decision that we need to make, so we'll continue meeting as a facility committee as we can schedule, so. Then I just listed a couple of end of year informational things, the staff retirement recognition has been canceled due to the the COVID-19, again, we're not to have gatherings of, of over 10, so we're trying to respect that, that has been, where the governor has asked us to do that and so we're respecting that. The last student day is, is Friday, May 29th, which is also the graduation. And Mr. Menton has shared with you the information and has gone, sent letters out to to parents and students of the ceremony and it'll be held at, starting at 5:45 in the parking lot and, and afterwards, we will go for a tour with all the, with a, with a parade to all three communities, but information specifically is, is in Mr. Menton's reports, so you can read that. specifically is is in Mr. Minton's reports. So you can read that. The last item I had was normally, this is a month that that I've been had the budget for next school year ready to present to you. And because of the COVID and all the other things that we've been dealing with, that has not has not been completed. And Lindsay's been working on it. We met last Monday and spent a lot of time on working, going through the questions that she had and putting together the best proposal we can. It's really been difficult because we really, it's hard to know where we're at right now because of the funding that's available. And like school funding is you don't know until that check arrives. We do not know what it's how much it's going to involve or what it involves. So so it's this going through this last two months now has made it that much more difficult. So what I'm planning on is to between now and then the June board meeting, I'll have the finance committee meet with Lindsay and myself and go through the budget and then have it ready for the June board meeting where we need to approve it before July 1. So so I'll have it ready for you. Okay, if you've got any questions, you can ask those.
Yeah. Yep, there you go.
Dale, you got that?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Um, did you, you or Derek, did you find out anything about having being being able to use the pool this summer?
I think Tracy has been working on that. Derek, do you have anything that you could add with that? Or I'm not sure where we're at.
I've talked to Tracy a couple of times. She's still waiting on regulations. She's got all the same entities that we have to follow, the county and the state. She's also got directives from the Red Cross that she's got to go by. So the last time I talked to her, it was still in limbo. She didn't know for sure if they'd be able to or not. It was all going to depend on what all of those entities said. But I haven't spoken with her since we got this last bit of information from the Department of Health. So I guess the answer is I don't know.
Okay. Could you could you keep us up to date on that if you find out anything from her?
Yeah, I I certainly can. I know she's hopeful they can. But let's wait and see like everything.
It's it's dependent on a lot of what public health is going to give us as far as allowing that. And she's talked about small group things with Derek. And so she would like to, but we're going to have to wait and see what the regulations are going to allow her to to do. And so.
And Tracy also has the limits of she's struggled to train lifeguards for this coming summer. So she may have some issues with that as well because she usually does a lifeguard training around this time of year, a little before this, and she's not been able to do that because of everything in the world.
That's understandable, I guess.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, Jeff? Or anyone else? All right. Hearing nothing else, we will move on to the elementary principals report. If Mr. Benson has anything he'd like to highlight or add.
The big thing we've got coming up here this week is we're going to do a little virtual kindergarten roundup on Tuesday or on Wednesday. We're going to do two different shifts from a Zoom meeting at 10 and 10 to 11 and then from 4 to 5. So if parents work and pick whichever one works best for them.
Would that would that be long enough for that roundup, one hour each time or not or?
Yeah, in the in the past, they've done it a one hour face to face. So if we've got to go a little bit longer, we can go a little bit longer.
Okay. How was the elementary as far as getting their assignments, their iPads and everything?
As good as we can expect. We we had quite a few do very, very well. And you know, that that goes back on to the staff that has has done exactly what we need them to do. We've had some that we've had to get on a little bit more. When I say get on, just more contact and use a little bit more of our parent support to help. But it's it's done as as good as we can ask.
Have have all of them been able to keep up pretty well, you know, or?
Yeah, I guess.
Graduating up to the next class?
Yep. The biggest concern for for that I've heard is when we rolled out these iPads, we did one per family. And you know, when you got a family of four and they have got to share an iPad, that that was the biggest concern. So that's that was our biggest issue to work around, but we've been able to do that.
Okay. I was just kind of wondering if everybody was able to get the same amount of attention and be able to move forward to the next class.
Yeah, we've got we've got everybody got the attention they needed.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Benson? All right. Thank you, Mr. Benson. We will move on to number three, high school principals report with Mr. Minton. And if you would like to add anything, Mr. Minton, you can unmute yourself. Maybe.
There we go.
All right.
The only thing I really want to emphasize is the first item I put in there was about the art position. We have it's been posted. It's been reposted. Like I said in the report, we did have one person that that we were going to interview. She actually accepted a job elsewhere on the day of the interview. So nobody has has applied yet for that. So we're not super, super concerned yet, but we are hitting a point where typically by this time, I would have had a few more people applying, quality applicants. So if anybody knows, anyone looking for an art job who's a a good quality, pass the word on. I just don't want people to think if it happens in the fall and nobody's applied, I don't want people saying that we've been trying to cut the art position because that sort of happened with choir last year where nobody was applying and they were saying we were trying to cut the choir position. We're not trying to cut art. We just, we don't have anybody applying yet.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Minton?
Mr. Minton?
Yes.
I have the same question to you as to Mr. Benson. How the homework and stuff went this year with the iPads? Were you able to move kids on to the next class? Or was that kind of a struggle or?
It's a, I would say the majority have done very well. There's, there's been some that have struggled. Some people, some people did nothing. And our concerns are if somebody wasn't working third quarter and they haven't done anything fourth quarter, it's going to be pretty hard to pass them on to to a passing grade. We've been working really hard to try to to make personal connections with each of those people. And you know, if if you talk to, like Nancy was saying a couple of weeks ago, that a lot of these people aren't even answering the phone when the school calls anymore. So it's that's been tough. Now, I'm happy to say that's a small percentage, but it's significant and it's it's concerning. If somebody was passing third quarter, it's most likely that they will be passing the semester if they've been putting it forth any kind of effort at all here.
Was was the ability to stay in tune there? Or did they just kind of give up? What do you think was the problem there?
When you say in tune, you mean just connected with the school?
Yeah, yeah. Or did they just plain give up and get bored?
I I think that it's a number of things. I think that when you have that direct person to person contact, think about how easy it would be for you right now to just go and do your own thing. And there's nothing they could do about it. I think that's been overly convenient for 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 some kids. And if they don't have parents in the home that are able to redirect them. And in some cases, I've talked to some some good parents that have really struggled who are home with kids to keep them to keep them redirected. But if those parents aren't around during the day, it's tough. And that's why we're asking teachers to to really be working hard here to make some of these connections going into the last few weeks here.
Okay. I know I've heard some things like that out in the community. That's why I was asking. So I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but I just want the kids to get a good education to be able to move on.
Well, but they also have to put forth the effort too.
Correct. I understand that. And and some some of them, you you have a hard time even when they're in class. So.
Absolutely.
I think the whole situation as a whole on both sides, it's not easy. Being a teacher sitting there trying to have 13 kids on their screen and one's twirling his chair, not paying attention if you're not right there with them. It's not that easy to keep their attention. And as a parent, you're not used to having your child home and having to do that extra work with them and not understanding some of the new ways and math is a big one. I've heard that. And it's it's not easy for parents either. And as a whole, either side, you have to give to get. And you got to give a little to get that. And you're right, if they're not willing to take that effort to get that education, it's hard for a teacher to push it on them because they're it, you can't. It's not going to work. So I think everybody in the whole has done amazing job doing whatever they can on both sides. With the situation we're in, nobody has had, nobody can do anything about it. And we're all doing the best we can and they're doing great. And I guess we just all have to just take one day at a time and baby steps with the whole situation. But that's my thought.
Tom Tom Cruise has been fantastic at actually going to people's houses and making home visits. And he's taken some other teachers with him at times just to try to to make again, build that bridge and just say, hey, we want you. You're important. We want to, we want to help you get through this. Because honestly, if if they're willing to put forth a little bit of effort, we want them to to move on. So whatever we can do, we're we're trying.
Well, hats off to Mr. Cruz and those people that went out and visited the homes. That's not easy.
Yep. And I should mention Claudia Redman also has has done a lot with the English language learners and has has really been out there trying to make home visits to all of her kids as well. So granted, she doesn't have the the large number of kids as most teachers, but but she has just really, I think, gone above and beyond and really put herself out there to to make those contacts. So she's done a fantastic job.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have anything else for Mr. Minton? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to our activities report with Mr. Flan.
For the first time in a number of years, we're going to look at increasing our athletic fees and our activity fees. It's all in my report. The numbers there in terms of how it would affect our budget, our revenues are all based on athletics. I don't have the activities for the very simple fact that all of our registrations were done and payments were done online for athletics. So it's really easy for me to generate a report off of that. The activities are in a different system and a little more difficult. So I just based it off of the athletics side, assuming that a similar change on the activities would generate, you know, some additional revenue there as well. The most significant change to what I'm proposing would be in terms of fees, treating the musical as one of our athletics. And the simple fact is that the number of coaches, the the staff that we have for that, the time commitment for that is much more similar to an athletic program than any of the other non curriculars like the one act play or speech or something like that. So that's why that's in there as such in my recommendation. And I was not recommending changing family caps simply because I think our our family cap at 350 is comparable to to school districts in the area. And it's more than three full sports. So it requires a family to have more than two kids participating in at least two activities to hit that. And that's a great commitment from a family to what we're trying to do. So that's where the financial cap would come in. Any questions on that before I talk briefly about community ed?
What what about the musical? I see there's is that also considered in that cap or not?
The musical would fit in to the the fine arts cap, which is, I don't know if I have it listed or not. The fine arts cap should be on the agenda, I would think.
150.
Yeah, it's 150. So it would fit into that fine arts cap. So if somebody was in one act and musical, it would come out to $150 instead of the two separate fees, which would be 100 or 200 or one, no, excuse me. 170, 170 if they were paid separate. So they'd hit that fine arts cap.
Thank you.
There are no other questions on that. What I've got in my report is that we've decided to cancel summer rec. Matt Zubkey and I have been working on this a lot over the last few weeks. We had a plan in place to have kids come in for like a three hour session, work in groups of nine with one instructor. So we don't break the 10 person limit in a group. They would go through a few activities, roughly three, if we can fill the number we think we'll get. We'd have one coach that would travel with them from activity to activity. We clean things up in between. They'd spend 45 minutes to 50 minutes at a at an activity. They'd go through three of those in the morning. We give them a little time in between to grab a drink of water, go to the bathroom, that kind of thing. And then we'd be able to do meals at the end of a morning session and right before another afternoon session. We had that kind of worked out. I met with the principals and Mr. Bransoy last week. With everything being canceled, we decided that we weren't comfortable offering this at this point. And I think the following day, the governor came out and said, it's okay to do exactly what we had planned. So we're going to try to offer something starting June 15. That would be about a two and a half week program. We've done four weeks in the past. But with everything going on this year, I my hope is that we can do it safely. We can do it to give kids some some outlet for some socialization, some physical activity, and something that I think families and parents, especially with with young kids will really appreciate. So I haven't looked at, since we're shortening it again, I haven't looked at exactly what our rate would be. It would be prorated a little bit based on what we've done in the past. We will not be able to offer busing because we can only put nine kids on a bus. So we can't have more than that 1 to 10 ratio in a space. It doesn't really do us much good to offer a bus if we can't pick up every kid that would want to come over. And we just don't have the financial means to offer three different buses or something to get everybody here. So Matt Zubkey and I are meeting tomorrow morning to finalize this and we're hoping to have some registration out to parents before the end of the week, certainly. And we'd be looking at going June 15 through either the first or second of July, right there before the 4. And a morning session about three hours, an afternoon session of about three hours. Our costs will be greatly reduced because we'll have a lot less workers. But obviously, we'll have a little less revenue coming in because of the shortened program. We won't charge the same amount for it this year. So that's the only other one I had. If there's any questions on that, everything I had in my report on that was wrong. So if you had questions, go ahead.
Derek, is there a way you could do it after the 4th of July for another two weeks sometime or not?
Um, it's. Um, it's possible we could. I have to talk to Zubkey about that because he's got to run that program and he wouldn't be he wouldn't have that into his schedule necessarily. So I gotta make sure that would work for him. Um, we'd have the option to do a a break in the middle and do another two-week session after that possibly. Uh, nothing's off the table right now. So that's something we'll discuss tomorrow and see how how the logistics would work. I also have to talk to Denny about how we can do that with what they're trying to do in the building in Olivia. Um, you know, you get into July and we start to really cut down his time on what he can in terms of gym floors, getting all the classroom cleaned up, the areas that we have to use for that. So I'll have to check with him on what his schedule is for the summer and and that might be a hindrance to that as well.
Well, at least it's something you're looking into and see if it works. If it does, it does. If it don't, it don't.
Yep.
Well, and we want to keep in mind too, Derek, with the email that we got for summer helpers. I think we'd probably be hitting a little harder in July.
Yeah, and the the response today sounded like if we're only using the three to five workers that that I think we'll need for this, that it shouldn't be too much of a conflict for some of the seed companies that rely on those kids to to come out and do the fieldwork. So I think we can make both work, but I will stay in touch with um with that entity and make sure it's it's not gonna cause problems.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Flan? All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to number five, school board discussions. Anybody have anything they'd like to discuss? All right. Hearing nothing, we'll move on to pool report, which is in our packet. And I'm not sure exactly what they Tracy wrote this, but um yeah, she the first paragraph says she's still waiting um to hear when they can open. So um, so any further questions? Yeah, please contact her. I know she's on top of this because well, she she believes that drowning is is a very real issue, which it is. And so she wants to make sure that that people are well taken care of in that regard. So all right, moving on to new business. Number one, authorize district office to seek newspaper quotes for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Motion's made by Decatell.
Second, Boleen.
Seconded by Boleen. Any questions or discussion? Nothing, we will vote. We'll start with Sandy.
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number two, that's the one we changed. We are not seeking a bread bid because that was a two-year commitment um from the last bread bid that we we did. So we are just seeking the dairy bid. So we're going to seek dairy bids for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Some will say it all.
Motion's made by Sagetall. Is that you, Jeff?
Yeah.
Seconded by Jeff. Any questions on any of that? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All uh not all in favor. Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
This is all in favor, correct?
No, 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 no. It's all roll call. It's all roll call.
Yeah.
I actually started off right this meeting. All right, Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number three, approve student dictionary, dictionary, directory information enclosure number one. This is uh, okay. Motion is made by Sandy.
Second, Bookdo.
Seconded by Bookdo. This isn't annual. This is just something you need to um approve annually. So nothing new here. Any other, any questions about this or discussion? Right. Hearing nothing, we'll vote. We'll start with Jamie.
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number four, approve the asbestos notification indoor air quality notice and the notice concerning use of pest control materials as enclosure number two.
This is a yearly deal, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Motion is made by Sagetall.
I'll second.
Seconded by Bookdo. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote. We'll start with Jamie.
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number five, approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. It's enclosure number three. John? That was, okay, so that was Jeff?
Yep.
Okay. Seconded by Boleen. All right. Any questions or discussion on this? All right. Hearing nothing, we'll vote. Jeff?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John? John?
Hi.
Okay, sorry. I didn't I didn't hear you. Sandy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
And Jamie?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number six, approve the S F Y twenty twenty-one application for special education fund statement of assurances. It's enclosure number four.
Some will Benson.
Motion's made by Benson.
Second Sagetall.
Seconded by Sagetall. S F Y means state fiscal year. That one kind of threw me for a second there. Sorry about that. All right. Any questions about any of that, any of this? All right. Hearing nothing, we will vote. Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number seven, approve student activity fees for the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one school year. Um, athletic fees are proposed to be junior high seventy-five dollars for sports, senior high a hundred dollars for sport, family cap at three fifty, fine arts junior high forty-five, senior high seventy, family cap one fifty. Musical would be seventy-five for junior high and a hundred dollars per for um senior high.
Jill, just a minute. That's with the musical and fine arts together as a cap, correct?
Uh, Mr. Flan? Yes.
Okay, that needs to be put in there. You read it separately, so we gotta include the cap in both together.
Okay.
The fine arts and the musical.
Um, so family cap, so we're talking that fine arts, the family cap under fine arts will be tied to both fine arts and musical, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Jamie.
Wrong arrow to it. It's what I'm doing. Joy? Joy? Hopefully Joy has that. So. All right. Um, Sandy, did you make a motion?
Oh, Jamie did.
Oh, Jamie did. Okay.
Jamie, are you okay? Are you okay with that, Jamie?
Yep, as long as Derek's okay with it. And he was shaking his head, so.
Yeah.
I'll second Bookdo.
Motion is made by Boleen, seconded by Bookdo. Any further discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we will begin with Tracy.
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Um, upcoming dates, May twenty-ninth is the last day of school for students. And May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty is also graduation. Via, it's at five forty-five and it is via drive-by ceremony with parade. So it will be, we'll start here at the school though. So.
So us as board members, what are we, what's our role?
You don't need, you can maybe come into town and be part of the parade, maybe be part of the onlookers of the parade. I think uh Mr. Menton has Tracy helping um hand out, because he can only have so many people. So you have to keep it less than ten. So he's got Tracy volunteer last after last meeting to help hand out diplomas. Um, I know Melissa and myself will be in vehicles with our kids. So I guess you probably just need to come into, if you're around, come into town and and one of the towns and be part of a part of the parade route.
There will be ten people. That's only, that's only two.
Other people though, Mr. Men has other people helping. So I I I don't know, but if he wants to unmute himself and tell us more about.
Well, I wouldn't mind helping, I guess, but.
Well, Mr. Men, this is his show.
We we are trying it hard to keep, we're gonna end up having more than than ten staff members there. It's gonna be impossible. But they're gonna be very spread out. Uh, each staff member, I'm encouraging them to have signs or do things like that. But they're also gonna have a job. They're gonna be making sure cars are lined up, uh checking for alphabetical order. They're going to be pointing which way to make sure, making sure cars are driving the right way through the parking lot, uh, making sure people are getting lined up. So uh I if you want to volunteer for one of those positions, uh, go ahead and email me and I can I can sign you up for a for a job. But there it we're not, I'm not gonna have any groups of people uh hanging together because I think that we're we're already pushing the line that the state doesn't want us to do this in the first place. Um, everything that they say says the safest thing to do is have a virtual graduation that's only online and don't ask people to leave their houses. But I I I don't like that. Nobody likes that. Uh, so then their next guideline is if you do have to do a a get-together, they're very specific about nobody can get out of their car. Um, uh, they're they're really specific about stuff like that. So uh, we're just worried about opening ourselves up for uh for liability if if an outbreak were to occur. They even say that cars, if cars are parked next to each other closer than six feet, they're not to have their windows down. So they're really specific about what we can and cannot do.
The M S P A held their, had a forty-five-minute uh phone conference last Thursday on that. Because they had gotten a number of calls uh trying to explain better what was expected. And 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 these guidelines uh are coming out of the State Department as well as the Health Department, the State Health Department. And and I think what they're trying to to say is the the closeness or the social is distancing is key here. And what they're afraid of is that everybody wants to congratulate each other and pretty soon you've got a a kind of situation that's out of control. And I think uh Mr. Menton has has set up a uh celebration, a ceremony that um will take care of that. So I think that's something. As far as board members, I think, you know, um, I know we all would like to shake hands and hug. That's what we've always done in the past. But we're at different times right now. So I think we need to respect that. And and like uh Mr. Menton said, look, the worst-case scenario is we could have a gathering where people got together and created the virus here that uh would spread. And so that's what we're trying to respect. And it is hard because uh ourselves, we we like to do. I have a hard time not shaking somebody's hand. In fact, today I saw somebody I had just met and right away I shook his hand and and he offered his hand and and we stopped back, we stepped back and said, oh, we 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 don't, we shouldn't be doing that. And so that's the times we're in right now. And I think we need to respect that and respect our kids, our students, their families. But it's pretty straightforward what they're asking us to do. So so I think um as board members is that uh like I shared one, maybe the best thing to do is send a card and congratulate them that way. It'll be a different type of ceremony.
If you want to be there and you want a job, let me know and I'll, I can add you to a list.
No breathing on anybody. Don't breathe on anybody.
Yeah, and and you gotta remember, they're not, yeah, we're not supposed to have them coming like walking up to the car and having them roll down the windows or it's gotta be like a wave or.
Yeah. All right. Uh, moving on to the resolution for acceptance of gifts, grants and bequests. So, member.
Sagetall.
Thank you. Member Sagetall introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas F and M Bank of Minnesota has generously offered to donate three hundred dollars towards the Bold Childcare towards snacks. Whereas Our Savior's Lutheran Church has generously offered to donate two hundred and twenty-five dollars towards the Bold Childcare also for snacks. Therefore, be it resolved by the Bold School Board to gratefully accept these gifts. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member
Benson.
Member Benson. And upon a vote being taken thereon, the following voted in favor thereof. And I've already forgotten where I left off. So we're gonna start with John.
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
And I myself, I am, I am an I. The foregoing resolution was approved this eighteenth day of May, twenty twenty. Thank you to both F and M Bank and Our Savior's Lutheran Church for those great donations. You're greatly needed. All right. Moving on.
Jill?
Yes, John?
What's what's the last teacher day?
Um, you'd have to ask Mr. Bransoy that.
June first.
June first, thank you.
June first.
June first.
Yeah.
Yes.
Monday.
Thank you.
Or Mr. Menton. Yes.
Sorry.
That's all right. Whichever.
Hey, we haven't got by the twenty-ninth yet.
I know. I just know that that's not a question that I probably need to know.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Um, with that, I think we uh have made it to the end of this meeting. So I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move Decatell.
Motion is made by Decatell. Seconded by Jill Hansen. And any discussion about any of that? Hearing nothing, we will vote by roll. Sandy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. And we will adjourn. Motion carries and we adjourn at eight oh eight. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.